Thank you, Mr. Hamer. I'd like to welcome everyone here this morning. This morning, we got Mr. Charlie Huff Statler.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You ready for me?
Yes, sir.
On six twenty-sixth, uh, twenty-one, I received a garbage bill, uh, of the month of, uh, July two thousand, April the third, two thousand, for a hundred and eighty-four dollars, forty cents. It was to an address, uh, twelve eleven County Road one oh seven, Elvin District, which we own. At that time, Jimmy and Ann Dillard was living in a trailer at that time, one of the addresses. They lived in the trailer from, uh, from, uh, two thousand to, Ann died in two thousand and nine. The bill is made the Monica M. Swasey. What was our address is on the bottom of it. And at no time was this lady living in that trailer. Ann was a bad diabetic, and I found that her get her, uh, diabetic, uh, best ever month. Her husband would do the temple if any of y'all, uh, remember Jimmy Dillard, but at no time was she living there. We were not aware of this bill until, uh, the twenty-sixth day of July of this year. I called, uh, the number on the bill, and I talked to a real nice lady named Monica. She was very helpful pulling up this information for me. And the only explanation she had was, uh, this lady, or somebody signed this lady, making her responsible for the bill of what she didn't pay for some three years. We don't owe the bill. We may have to pay it, but we don't owe it. I got a copy of the bill here for anyone that wants it. I don't know where this will happen or not. I think I talked to Mr. Johnson up here.
Yes, sir, I talked to him.
Yeah. Uh, he called down there. Well, I understand that no statute of limitations. It's, uh, just like murder, murder, you know, that stays on books all time. But we've just notified that. And we don't owe it.
Miss Charlie, I've had my own property and I've got one now. And I always just add the garbage bill to the rent and I pay it myself. But when you have renters and they leave and don't pay it, it goes back to the land.
I know that.
And that's why it came back to you. But the law won't allow us to forgive a garbage bill.
Well, this person never lived there. She never lived there. It's a lot of Swasey, you know? But when they ever want it, it been Ann Dillard's. So make sure she has her diabetes.
Did she say, Mr. Charlie, how it got in her name?
She would not, did not say.
Is Miss Ann, does Miss Ann lady, is she still alive?
No, she died. Do you have a garbage bill on Ann Dillard?
Have a. Somebody named Ann Dillard, Crystal Dillard.
Who is, who is Crystal Dillard?
Must be, uh, must be, uh, Dillard.
But you don't know who Monica Swasey is?
Oh.
Is Crystal still around, this?
I don't know. Now, they hit it like Google this name, the Monica Swasey. There was one in Oklahoma, she said she was four years old. She had a phone number and I called her. She's never lived in this city.
Maybe we need to talk to Tanya some more about it.
Mr. Charlie, can we get a copy of what you have there? When we can talk with this Tanya, Three Rivers?
I got, I got five copies.
Well, I suggest take it under advisement, check into it.
But I will say this, in going back and doing a lot of checking, I did try to feel that what I paid made pay for the Ann Dillard's, I mean, the bill to Ann Dillard, yeah, for eight dollar eighty cents, we are gonna pay that, but she was living there at that time.
And actually, I spoke with Tanya Chandler, who was over at the Solid Waste, and she says she was going to take off eighty cents, which were the late charges for that. It would just be eight dollars.
Who did I pay this to? Sharon?
If you want to.
He'll probably take it.
But, but you could just pay the eight dollars. You could pay it, like, just go to the bank and pay it.
B and A Bank.
B and A Bank will take that.
We, we start, we do not owe this bill now.
Mr. Huff Statler, can I have that address, please, to see if we have a tag registered?
Two one one County Road one oh seven.
And how to spell the name Swasey, S W A Z Y.
No, it's E A Z.
Take, take her a copy then.
E A Z Y.
S W A Z Y.
You want this?
All right.
Tammy?
All right, ma'am.
Okay, I'm, we're going to make a motion to take this under advisement, let's check into it.
I'll make a motion, take it under advisement. So.
Second for CJ, all in favor. Motion to. Uh, we're gonna check into this, Mr. Charlie, if someone want to get back with you.
Thank you very much. Is that over me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Monica Swasey, New York, Oklahoma. What? Uh, Tanya should have all of it. You know, I'm gonna say, Charlie ain't saying nothing wrong, he could be confused too.
See, he mentioned about the receipt.
Take garbage bill.
I just wanted to check, check the power was turned off in this top here?
Mm-hmm.
You don't have to pay it.
No.
She's not, she's sixteen eighty-four.
She's already not talking.
Sixteen eighty-four.
I don't know who powered.
Right, his name is Sam.
It's under the Swasey, under the Dillard.
Right. We need to find that.
And I would be happy if Swasey was in the Dillard somehow, possibly. I don't know. It's really sweet.
Because of credit, if you got bad credit, it's hard to get your power hooked up.
And now this lady would have been a bad health problem. I don't credit no money for somebody to get power taken over for. I'm, I'm speculating too.
I was just hoping to give for objections.
That's good.
Uh, CJ, number two.
Number one.
Make a motion to take this school bus turnaround on three twenty-eight out from under advisement and approve it. Given under advisement and last meeting in May.
To approve?
Yes.
I'll say.
Okay. CJ, y'all heard CJ, he made a motion to approve this turnaround. Chad second, all in favor. Motion carry. Lay it out. All right, we have a public hearing for objections on the land road. I see nobody present.
Um.
Mr. Hamer, you got something to say?
Just, uh, just to get to about some of them. Um, one of them, um, Karen had just changed around the, um, air tanks that they had into different school districts. We took care of that one in the office, they understood. The other one we had was about, um, income approach versus cost approach for a motel hotel. We did not use income approach for that. They had COVID relief, and I think we had covered that prior with some taxes that were questioned that y'all, um, were not granting COVID relief because they received federal relief, um, prior to that. So we took care of all objections inside the office, so we're good.
Hey, good deal. Thank you. We don't do anything else, man. Take no action. Okay, we gonna be mark number four off for the time being, we going to number five. Approval of monthly budget. Some of it. We can just mark it. Motion to Randy.
Second.
Second for CJ, all in favor. Motion carry. No, we're just, no, we're just.
We're not taking any action.
No action, we're not now, that's why we're just passing up on it.
Okay. Thanks.
Amend the general fund budget for personnel services for building and grounds, chance record, youth court, circuit court. Make a motion. Motion to Chad.
Second.
Second for Sam, all in favor. Motion carry. Amend the general fund budget for the EMR.
Make a motion.
Motion to CJ.
Second.
Second for Chad, all in favor. Motion carry. Approval of county school tax request budget. Make a motion. Make it to Chad.
We just stay in the same state.
Just stay in the same state. I think it's the same.
I think your Miller Drive will decide.
Second.
Who's that, Sam? Second for Sam, all in favor. Motion carry. This is discuss modifying COVID nineteen policy for Union County. We need to reapprove our policy.
We don't find that county.
Yeah, so, you know, the COVID policy right now provides, when we got certain things, if someone has any symptoms, whether they have to go home, not show up for work, if they've been exposed, um, all those portions of policy, I believe, should remain in effect. The issue at this point in time is, um, there's a payment of up to eighty hours in addition to leave time that employees already accumulate. And, um, obviously, after the federal law was, uh, was taken out of effect, which would have been at the conclusion of two thousand and twenty, um, we continue to operate under the policy of up to eighty hours. So the question is, if someone has to miss work, um, for COVID related, you know, if they believe they've been exposed, if they believe they've got any symptoms, do you continue to maintain that they get up to eighty hours, uh, first, and then they have to exhaust their leave time? Or do you just get rid of the eighty hours and simply allow them to have, to permit them to only use their leave time that they accumulate anyway? Just like if they had the flu or whatever else? So that's, that's the question before it all.
So the question is, we gonna take the eighty hours off and just use sick days, personal sick days as any other illnesses, Swasey?
From my opinion on that, all county employees, uh, get twelve days a year for sick days. I make a motion to take the eighty hours off. It leaves the policy intact, otherwise. I'll second.
Motion by Randy, second for CJ. All in favor. Motion carry. Discuss approving the revised commercial garbage contract form.
I think I had emailed that to everybody. I know I'd sent it to Terry. Um, this is the one that we had done some work with Three Rivers on, uh, and all of the other, trying to have one uniform contract for all of the counties that Three Rivers services. I've seen the contract, it's good. You know, it's some issues with commercial, uh, property owners, not just Union County, but everywhere. And, uh, I say everywhere, meaning in, in the other counties that are served, serviced by Three Rivers. And so the form, um, has been vetted, and I certainly think it's, uh, in a good form for us to use going forward.
Okay, wouldn't, wouldn't this, I remember looking at it, and it's been a while, but wouldn't that pertaining to how they was gonna pay you also?
Correct.
Up front?
Correct. It all, it governs not only how.
It's supposed to be coming out of their account. It's a direct. It's gonna be direct.
I might have to look at the.
That's what it needs to be.
Agreement. Uh, oh, well, you can approve it subject to that provision. Or just approve it with that addition, and I'll add it in if it's not in there.
That'll stop some of the problems we have.
Yeah, I understand. There's also the issue of making sure that it attaches to the land and something.
Well, they don't do that.
Huh?
Commercial doesn't. Commercial. Commercial does not?
Yeah, I know, that was one of the issues that we, that we had, but it's more about the payment.
And that's why I have trouble getting elected papers.
Yeah.
It's like the guy picked up too, is also talking about her.
But if you hook it to, if you hook it to their, if you draw it out of my account, that'll stop it.
Yeah.
Partially, until they stop that payment.
But that's when you go get there, and you ain't four hundred dollars down the road later.
True. If you say you're not giving them. But people aren't, people are trying to dodge, dodge paying for sure.
That's true.
Well, if you got a month payment ahead, then if I missed a month, it's just the even.
It ought to be tied to their land, I don't want it to not, but like, it should stay low. That's not, not tied to it.
Do y'all wanna pass this or take it under advisement, look at it more? Or what you wanna do?
I think you're ready to pass it if, if, I just gotta make sure that it's got the auto draft in it.
That's what you.
I just haven't looked at it in like, two weeks, I don't want to tell y'all it's in there and I, I don't remember.
Well, if it's not, we can add that too.
Yeah.
I'm fine.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Motion by Chad, second for Randy. All in favor. Motion carry.
And most people that pay, pay, you know, you just have trouble with some that don't pay. Next you start paying here.
Paid mine, okay.
Approval payroll authorizations. Do I need to do these individually or just read over all of them?
We can do them all together unless there's, unless there's one specific.
Okay, I'll read them off and then we can approve them. Agree or disagree or whatever. Toby Scott at Road Department, William Blake Smith, shop mechanic for Road Department, James Mike Allred for Solid Waste Department, Victoria Ashley Jennings as full-time deputy at the Sheriff's Department, Jeremy Jensen as jailer, changed from full-time to part-time, Sean Brad, Bradley Thompson as dispatcher, changed from part-time to full-time, Gunner Higgins as full-time dispatcher, changed from full-time deputy to full-time dispatcher. Everybody, I'll make a motion. Motion by Chad, second for Sam, all in favor. Motion carry.
Jimmy, this one, this floor up to one had to pay a motor or something different.
Wrecked.
It's wrecked. Tell me if one of them other fixed.
Got one. Got it, it's a vehicle.
Yeah, you just get one fixed.
Got another one that's, and.
They did the same thing? They did the same deal?
Uh-oh.
No.
Got two and shot from one mix, three now, right there. Hard to keep them all right.
Well, they both run, run the same model, the floor would, wouldn't it?
Yeah, they would. Well, no.
Approval of inventory deletion of twenty sixteen Ford Explorer, Sheriff's Department.
Make a motion.
Motion by Chad.
Second.
Second for Randy, all in favor.
Make our parts. We get eleven, eleven thousand parts.
Ain't hearing.
We gotta try to find something.
Ask them if they'll give us eleven thousand, let's keep it for parts, and then we can hand it over to them.
Back, back, you keep sales, John. Good?
Yes, sir.
Approval of manual check for nineteen hundred and one dollars for the pipe fund.
Motion approved. You finished?
Motion Randy.
Second.
Second for CJ, all in favor. Motion carry.
Let's go back real quick to Solid Waste. So the form, I just, I just pulled it up. It does provide that it becomes a lien on the business owner's property. Um, that's, that's the one that, that was one of the issues that we had discussed. And so if it's not paid by the rentor, the tenant, then it becomes a lien which can prevent the owner of the property from getting a car tag. That's the form that's provided. The second thing is that it provides that a person may pay by, may pay by check, bank draft, or credit card. So y'all want that part to be modified so that they have to pay by bank draft.
Well, I wouldn't say necessarily, if you had, you got good paying customers that's been paying otherwise, I wouldn't force them to go to, I mean, I'd say.
What about the ones that already had this problem, are they gonna turn around and be like him and get a bill?
It's a commercial property.
I know.
You gonna have new people sign these contracts.
Right, so it's from here forward?
Yeah.
Okay. You think if you, if you, if you get the month ahead, if you charge a month ahead, when they miss that first month, all you gotta go through is pick that dumpster up and you're leaving. You see what I'm saying?
True. Is that, is that in the contract?
And then you ain't losing that money.
Are they gonna pay a month ahead?
So now you don't get a report from Three Rivers, how long?
Well, a lot of people, like, if you rent something, you get a deposit up front, I promise. And then when you do, you get your deposit back.
Yes, there's a security deposit. It may be required.
In the land report, but once it's ninety days, that's up, so you may not know it for ninety days.
Right.
I'm worried about that.
So I'm having that.
That's what I know, I don't like that.
The owner has signed this contract.
Say they don't?
Well, that's, this is brand new. This is going to the sky. Then they're gonna have to have the owner sign it.
You would know.
That was one of the big things, we didn't want, when we were talking about it, I, I remember the point that it's not fair if CJ owns a building and his renter goes out and gets the, gets the dumpster, and he doesn't know about it, and he has to pay it. So the way we fix that was the owner has signed the contract so that he is aware that his renter is getting this and that he is responsible if his renter don't pay it.
Well, that's, that's, I can live with, I can live.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
But it need to have a big register.
I mean, because here's the thing, is the owner can say, look at the.
Boy, you signed it.
Look, if the tenant goes and wants a garbage bin, and the owner will not sign, they're not getting it. Simple as that.
That's right.
It's the owner's choice because he owns the property.
What ought to be done is they ought to collect, just like the others that have rental properties to collect.
I'd be rental house the same way.
That's what I'm talking about.
I don't disagree.
I take care of the whole problem. No, I know what I did. I'd say I ain't signed it, you can get one for something like Saturday County.
And, and honestly.
That's what's gonna happen.
No, and honestly, that's the thing that we said, is that ultimately, if the owner tells his tenant, "Look, I'm not signing on to this," then the tenant's just gonna have to get one through Waste Manager or somebody else, can get one through the county.
That's right, I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
Again, the owner is in control, which is the way it should be, 'cause he owns the property. It's his choice.
He knows upfront it's coming back on him.
That's right, he knows upfront, and if he don't pay, it's coming back on him.
Approval of medical examiner fees, we have seven of them.
I'm on a motion.
Second for CJ. Second for Sam, all in favor. Make it carry. Just just quote received for culverts, Fulton Pipe Company and G and O Supply Company.
The one from G and O Supply Company? For forty of them, it's nine thousand, this is completed, it's a culvert and a lift loads for nine thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars. And from Fulton Pipes, it's nine thousand eight hundred thirty dollars.
Which one's both?
G and O.
Motion to Sam, second for Chad, to take the low bid, which was G and O. Approval of inventory deletion of the constable. What we deleting here?
Man to give it to they walk up. That's it. Right, yeah. Flip work.
I put a man because I didn't have anything.
On a car radio.
I didn't, yeah, I just put a man because I didn't have anything.
You had another deletion to that.
There's a deletion of a car radio, my mobile.
Make a motion. Flagging up as a share.
Motion by Chad, make a second.
Randy.
Second Randy, all in favor. Motion carry. Approval of July surrender tag list.
Motion approved.
Motion by Randy, if he looks at all those tags.
I looked at all of them yesterday. Sorry, Todd.
July, the second.
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 Second for CJ, all in favor? Motion carry. That's what you want, John Henry, right? You want John Henry, right? Or you do just dispose of it? Yep. Approval of petitions for reductions and increases of assessments.
I have two, um, petitions for reduction of assessment. Um, one was a business that was closed. Um, another was for, um, homestead filed in another county, so. That's what those were about. You missing that sign and follow?
I need approval for this. Motion to approve. Motion to Randy.
Second.
Second for Chad, all in favor? Motion carry. Two sleep bombs out. Just one. Inside of a bunch of them. You look like that one. You know the same? That's all right, right, I could. Approval of final resolution for add-to-learn tax exemptions.
This is on the add-to-learn tax exemptions from the applications that the industries had applied for and you approved them as submitted by the Tax Assessor's Office after they had reviewed them. I sent them to Jackson and they were very quick on their turnaround and they approved them all.
So, we approve their approval?
We have to approve their approval, yes.
I'm like, love. Second for the Chad, second for CJ, all in favor? Motion carry. We got, uh, did you wanna, hey, Chad, do you wanna stick with you?
Yeah, Jim, Jim and Ken got something, tell us, no?
Yeah, uh, on our road job, it's that state aid right now. Get back any day, I don't know if you get authority back, and whenever they come back.
Well, we gonna have to wait till another.
Right.
Board make, it comes back. There's between them.
So, they come in in the next few weeks, which we will, we should. We can add that, so we have to wait till the next week to do this.
Which, which, uh, road is this?
Yeah.
Eleven.
We had none this year, Jimmy.
I thought we'd already done it.
Where they can just do it without having to come back and ask us each time.
That's all.
I mean, no, it's just, you know, we've already done it.
We've already done it?
We did it, we, where we approved.
Discuss a general order.
A general order saying, right, yes, a general order saying that they can, we approve them, act, authorizing them to advertise when it's necessary.
You good, you got to go.
Sure.
If you want, yes, but if you want to do it again, it doesn't matter.
Wait here. Wait here, we won't be back till morning.
We did this one too, but just go ahead, we did already, but do it again, it's okay. Need to be projects specific.
Pardon?
Need to be projects specific, it's SAP seventy-three, eight hole S. Did you hear that?
Eight?
Eight hole S.
S.
You just want to come right to that.
Right.
I'll come right afterward, yeah.
Okay, Chad, you make a motion?
Yeah.
To do what, to approve advertising?
Right. When, when, when the, when the everything's cleared through the state. Well, we can get started on this.
Who seconded?
Oh, well, CJ said it.
We're proving, so you've proven it, CJ.
Re- 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 approve of.
Yeah, re- print the office.
Why we doing under to anyone, say, say they need to advertise for the state aid?
Re- approve state aid, just, just say yes.
They want to get, get the end of the game from the state aid deal, instead of waiting to next, you know, cause it's supposed to come in on point meetings. And then go ahead and start advertising for our state aid projects we're going to, on the road.
Alright, who make the motion, alright, Chad make the motion.
CJ made the second, all. All in, motion carry.
Tammy, you have anything else? Scotty? Sheriff?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes, sir.
Alright, we need, I'm making, I have an executive, executive session. If you want to announce it.
I, uh, economic development with Gary Chandler and, uh, then we've got a.
Personal.
A personnel issue.